Okay. Sorry for the slight photo op delay. This regular meeting of the Board of Education for June 11, 2019 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. We also have interpreters with us this evening, and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language into which they'll be interpreting, and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Me llamo Daniel, y voy a estar ofreciendo una interpretación en español para los que les necesita. Muchas gracias y que tengan buenas tardes.
Doy un beso. Si ustedes necesitan un traductor ruso, me llamo Maria, y voy a estar en el hólice. Gracias.
Buenos días. Si ustedes necesitan información de Vietnam, por favor, vayan hacia atrás del hall. Habrá información de Vietnam para ustedes. Gracias.
Soy un traductor en español. Si ustedes necesitan ayuda, puedo ayudarles. Soy un traductor en español. Si ustedes necesitan ayuda, puedo ayudarles.
También me gustaría aprovechar esta oportunidad para saludar a Kara Huff, quien ahora ha unido al oficinas del Board. Y estamos muy contentos de saludarla. Así que comenzaremos con comentarios de estudiantes en publico. Antes de empezar el periodo de comentarios públicos, me gustaría revisar las guías para comentarios públicos. El Board agradece a la comunidad por tomarse el tiempo para asistir a este encuentro y proporcionar sus comentarios al Board. valoramos la input pública como informa nuestro trabajo y esperamos escuchar sus pensamientos, reflexiones y preocupaciones. Nuestra responsabilidad como Board es activamente escuchar con nuestros dispositivos electrónicos encendidos y los documentos dejados fuera. Un recordatorio rápido: cualquier señal, cualquier señal en tamaño sobresaliente debe estar en la parte trasera, y señales en la audiencia no deben ser guardadas de una manera que obstalice la vista de alguien. Miembros del Board y el superintendente no responderán a comentarios o preguntas durante el comentario público, pero el oficinas del Board seguirá las cuestiones relacionadas con el board durante el testimonio público. Si quieren una respuesta, por favor contacten a la señora Huff. Guías para la entrada pública enfatizan el respeto y la consideración de los demás. Las complaintes sobre empleados individuales deberían dirigirse al oficina del superintendente como un asunto de personal. Si tienen materiales adicionales o cosas que quieran proporcionar al superintendente del Board, pedimos que las entreguen a la señora Huff para distribuirnos. Los presentadores tendrán un total de tres minutos para compartir sus comentarios. Por favor comencen declarando su nombre y escribiendo su nombre final por la cuenta. Durante los primeros dos minutos del testimonio, aparecerá un rayo verde. Cuando tengan un minuto restante, se encenderá un rayo azul, y cuando su tiempo termina, se encenderá un rayo rojo y un buzón sonará. Pedimos respetuosamente que concluyan sus comentarios en ese momento. Agradecemos su input y gracias por su cooperación. Señora Huff, ¿tenemos a alguien inscrito para un comentario de estudiantes o público? Sí, lo tenemos. Tenemos a Kira Swinth y a Aruna Barati.
Mi nombre es Kira Swinth. Swinth es escrita S-W-I-N-T-H, y soy junior en Cleveland High School. Quisiera rápidamente agradecer a Scott Bailey por asistir a nuestro show de CrossFit Spring en Cleveland Back on May 31. Gracias. No hay muchos días que me destacan en mi mente como el día en que hice mi primer pullo. Mientras este movimiento simple puede parecer poco, representó tanto de mi viaje a encontrar la dignidad y la fortaleza. Entré en el programa de Cleveland CrossFit en el primer año de secundaria de la escuela con la intención de cumplir con mi requisito para el PE. No tenía deseo de perseguir un deporte tan intimidador y intenso. Entré en el salón de peso el primer día con mucho bagaje, y pronto aprendí que mi instructor, Mandy Weaver, hizo que no solo me ayudara a encontrar un propósito en mi educación física, sino también a desatar este bagaje para ayudarme a encontrar un propósito dentro de mí mismo. Entré en la clase con duda personal y muy poca confianza. Incluso le dije a Mandy en el primer mes de mi primer año que mis proporciones corporales me hicieron que nunca podría hacer un pullo. Mandy, poco a poco, se desvaneció de mi duda personal. Fueron recordatorias aquí y allá de que era buena. Fue su amabilidad. Fue el ejemplo que estableció. Un poco más de un año después, llegué al bar de pullo con una nueva mentalidad. Sí, puedo. Puedo hacer un pullo. Puedo hacer casi cualquier cosa. Esta transformación de la confianza es en parte debido a la comunidad única que nuestro programa de CrossFit fomenta, pero también es en parte debido a la apoyo inminente de Mandy para chicas como yo. Desafortunadamente, Mandy ha sido desasignada de Cleveland para el año escolar 2019-2020, una segunda vez para ella en los últimos dos años. Con la pérdida de Mandy como mi maestra, me preocupo por el programa y chicas como yo que pueden no tener a alguien para apoyarlas. Además de esto, sin Mandy, Cleveland no tendrá ningún miembro de personal femenino presente en el área de la locker room de las chicas porque no hay otra maestra de PE femenina. Esto presenta preocupaciones de seguridad física y emocional. Además, me pregunto si no tener una maestra de PE femenina en el gimnasio, salón de peso y específicamente locker room es potencialmente una violación de Title IX. En la TITL nine, la participación de los estudiantes en las athletics y, por supuesto, programas académicos debe evitar y prevenir programas con desproporcionado el enrollment basado en sexo y asegurar que la discriminación sexual no está causando ningún efecto negativo para el acceso de los estudiantes a oportunidades educativas iguales. Actualmente, el programa de CrossFit bajo la dirección de Mandy ha aumentado la participación de las estudiantes femeninas un 3% cada año, resultando en más chicas en el salón de peso. También, los estudiantes nonconformes y trans han expresado a mí que se sienten más cómodos en el gimnasio donde es habitual que la masculinidad sea la norma. Mandy ha creado un entorno inclusivo para todos los estudiantes. Y nuestros preocupaciones pasan más allá de nuestros estudiantes identificados como femeninas en Cleveland. Basado en los números de pronóstico, habrá solo menos de 100 estudiantes que no podrán tomar CrossFit el próximo año porque el número de secciones ha sido reducido a tres. Nuestro programa de CrossFit prospera como comunidad de apoyo y amor, pero el financiamiento no refleja nuestra crecimiento. Necesitamos ayuda y necesitamos apoyo. Necesitamos que las chicas se sientan bien y seguras en espacios athletics, y necesitamos instructores como Mandy Weaver.
Hola. Eso es bueno.
Bueno, voy a pedir algunas indulgencias esta noche. Esta es la primera vez que Kara está tocando los botones. Así que creo que todos tenemos que darle un poco de gracia aquí, y no es una cosa fácil. Así que...
Bien. Hola. Mi nombre es Aruna Barati, y soy sophomera en Cleveland High School. Juntándome en un campamento de refugiados, yo y mi familia no teníamos muchas oportunidades para hacer lo que queríamos hacer y cómo hacerlo. Después de que mi ciudad natal fue destruida por India y China, teníamos que huir del lugar que llamábamos casa. Luego de eso, aprendí que yo y mi familia íbamos a tener un nuevo hogar en Portland. Fue muy difícil para mí adaptarme a la nueva cultura, haciendo nuevos amigos y aprendiendo a hablar un nuevo idioma, pero lo hice. Y terminar el secundario fue realmente difícil para mí porque sabiendo que iba a ir a la escuela secundaria fue muy estresante. Siempre vi que personas pequeñas como yo fueron acosadas en películas, y no quería eso por mí misma. Decidí tomar entrenamiento de velocidad y fuerza, que es el curso de CrossFit a nivel interno, en lugar de PE. Porque mi hermana me dijo que era empoderante para ella, y aprendió mucho sobre sí misma durante ese curso. Primer día de entrenamiento de velocidad y fuerza, y estoy temprano. Pienso a mí mismo, soy 80 libras, no puedo levantar. Voy a la escalera y veo a Mandy Weaver diciendo al clase que trabajara el día. A medida que pasaba el año, hice actividades con el curso de CrossFit a nivel superior y formalmente conocí a Mandy. Mandy me hizo sentir bien y me animó a tomar CrossFit para el año sophomero. Me hizo sentir como si el CrossFit fuera un lugar para mí, donde podía ser exitoso y en el clase. Me inspiró a persistir en los desafíos que experimenté en otros espacios dominados por hombres, como el boxeo. Soy una de las dos chicas de Cleveland High School, oh, en el equipo de boxeo de Cleveland, y es debido al CrossFit que veo a mí misma como un atleta fuerte e independiente que es igualmente capaz como todos mis atletas masculinos. Sin embargo, me preocupa mi seguridad el próximo año en CrossFit si Mandy no está allí. Siento que puedo hablar con ella de mi experiencia como atleta femenina y casi de cualquier cosa que ocurra en mi vida. Me hace sentir incluida como atleta femenina en su clase. Este es el objetivo de la TITL nine, ¿verdad? Chicas como yo tienen la oportunidad de sentirse bien y seguras en espacios athletics. Tener un instructor femenino es fundamentalmente para mi seguridad en el espacio. He visto mucho en mi vida. Es habitual sentirme como si tuviera una voz y una comunidad que me apoya después de haber vivido todos los diferentes circunstancias. Mandy me recuerda a la voz y me hace sentir en casa en el CrossFit. Gracias.
Siguiente, Brady Ross y Rebecca Hanafin.
Hola, mi nombre es Brady Nickel Ross, R-O-S-S. Soy madre de dos estudiantes de la escuela secundaria de Cleveland, y soy educadora misma. Estoy aquí hoy para hablar de la decisión de dejar ir al entrenador de CrossFit, Mandy Weaver. Esta decisión tiene muchas consecuencias que no creo que se hayan abordado correctamente por la administración. Primero de todo, el entrenador Weaver es el único instructor de fitness femenino. Estoy consciente de que la salud y el PE caen en el mismo departamento, por lo que evitando la representación de género. Sin embargo, la partida de Mandy significaría que no una mujer femenina está en un rol de entrenador en el PE. La representación importa. Repeticiones de estudios han demostrado que las chicas jóvenes benefician de ver a mujeres en varios roles, especialmente las que han sido tradicionalmente reservadas para hombres únicos, como en el caso del peso. El entrenador Weaver tiene un efecto imperol en la población femenina que toma CrossFit. Representa a un modelo de rol femenino en un campo predominante masculino. 除去la, nuevamente daría la indicación de que el CrossFit y el peso son trabajos masculinos, como los únicos otros coaches para esas actividades son masculinos. Similarmente, el locker room posee un problema porque es un espacio semi-privado. Las bañeras son el mismo tipo de espacio. La incidencia de acoso, violencia, harassment, alcohol, tabaco, uso de drogas, vandalismo, dolores alimenticios y comportamiento de auto injerencia, que las chicas son más probabilidades de involucrarse, están más altas en estos espacios. No tener un instructor femenino como supervisor o hacer agujeros aleatorios periódicos en el locker room deja a los estudiantes femeninos vulnerables. Aunque los maestros de salud femeninas están en el campus, no están ahí durante estos tiempos para asegurar que los estudiantes femeninos sean seguros. Esto parece ser una responsabilidad. Como madre de dos estudiantes allí, me preocupa que la seguridad de los estudiantes no se tome más en serio. Hoy miré la política de la escuela pública sobre supervisión en el locker room en todo el país. Sobrepasaron la mayoría de las escuelas que aseguran que alguien esté en el locker room por propósitos de seguridad. Solo saber que un maestro está en el área de la locker room o en el oficina adyacente puede reducir los problemas de comportamiento. Finalmente, tengo que mencionar que el entrenador Weaver ha pasado por encima y más allá de su trabajo para involucrar a la gente de fuera de la escuela. En términos de comunicación de la comunidad y construcción, el CrossFit es un deporte basado en la comunidad. Mandy Weaver ha demostrado que es un entrenador que se encuentra en el público en eventos para construir comunidad y recaudar dinero. Mandy ha demostrado una habilidad para reunir a la gente y iluminar positivamente Cleveland High School, así como el trabajo que hacen los niños y los coaches. Recientemente, formó un evento que reunió 210 atletas de 18 diferentes centros de CrossFit y fitness y recaudó más de $6,000 en este único evento en el distrito, para recaudar $6,000 en el distrito. Los estudiantes aprenden no solo fitness personal y peso, sino que aprenden cómo ser parte de su comunidad mayor. En este momento, aproximadamente 10% de la población actual de Cleveland toma CrossFit. Creo que eso debería importar.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rebecca Hanafin. Soy miembro del grupo de advocacy de dislexia de PPS. Estoy aquí esta noche agradecida por escuchar sus preocupaciones y recomendaciones de la comunidad de dislexia durante el último año. Están tomando pasos significativos para convertirse en líder nacional en la arena de la adquisición de literatura para todos los estudiantes y en crear un entorno que apoya a los alumnos con dislexia. Hay una creciente conciencia entre los distritos escolares en toda la nación que las prácticas actuales de instrucción de lectura no satisfacen las necesidades de 20% o más de los estudiantes de hoy. Esta estadística tiene un impacto devastador en los niños que luchan o fallan en aprender a leer. Estos son los mismos estudiantes que más probablemente se desvanecerán de la escuela debido a la frustración. El éxito de aprendizaje temprano y el apoyo adecuado para los alumnos con dislexia es fundamental para un programa de educación k-12 de calidad. Estudios científicos demuestran que los alumnos con dislexia pueden ser enseñados a leer, y técnicas que funcionan para lectores que luchan tienen beneficios para todos los estudiantes. Tener un sistema que cumpla las necesidades de todos los tipos de aprendizajes es también un problema clave de equidad. Familias de pocos ingresos, negros, blancos y indígenas son menos susceptibles de poder pagar tutoría privada. Strongemente apoyamos su decisión en el presupuesto de 2019-2020 para contratar un coordinador de dislexia, para invertir en el desarrollo profesional en apoyo de métodos de enseñanza temprana de literatura y para conducir un análisis de la diferencia. Esperamos que el trabajo del coordinador de dislexia sea en gran medida dedicado a trabajar con socios internos y externos para evaluar el sistema entero k-12 y para desarrollar un plan comprensivo para cerrar la brecha de la literatura para los estudiantes al proporcionar apoyo adecuado para los alumnos con dislexia. componentes importantes del plan de dislexia del distrito son que incluye el desarrollo profesional continuo y el entrenamiento de maestros, herramientas de intervención para estudiantes de nivel 2 y 3, soluciones tecnológicas y cambios en las políticas y prácticas instruccionales. Desarrollar un buen mapa de camino para los cambios sistémicos necesarios para lograr la literatura para todos es fundamental, y apoyamos este importante trabajo. Continuamos recomendando la establecimiento de un grupo de asesoramiento de dislexia que incluiría a los padres, estudiantes y educadores. Este grupo de asesoramiento sería útil en el desarrollo del plan de dislexia del distrito y en proporcionar feedback para las medidas de implementación. La noche de información de la familia de dislexia que se llevó a cabo el 30 de mayo de este año es un gran ejemplo de una colaboración positiva entre la comunidad de dislexia y el distrito. Ese encuentro fue muy exitoso, fue muy bien recibido por nuestros miembros y esperamos continuar con este tipo de asociación en el próximo año escolar. Gracias de nuevo por su liderazgo y por estar tan abiertos con nuestra comunidad dislexica apasionada y conocida.
Hola, mi nombre es Emily Giugni, G-I-U-G-N-I, y estoy aquí como padre de Rigler y el presidente del PTA. Primero, queremos expresar nuestra más gratitud. Gracias mucho por encontrar la manera de conseguir elecciones para estudiantes de Rigler en Beaumont. Tener música y artes disponibles para nuestros hijos tendrán un efecto positivo en la participación. Especialmente grata de escuchar que ustedes están potencialmente considerando un profesor de música en Rigler y Scott también. Lo que me impresiona más de esto es el plan de grandes imágenes que apoya y une todo el clúster Madison. Tiene interés en preparar a nuestros hijos para un éxito a largo plazo y una comprensión de la interconectividad de estas cosas. Al hacer esto, están preparando al fantástico profesor de música de Madison, Jeremy Dell, para tener un programa de escuela secundaria exitoso, esperando contribuir al mejoramiento en las tasas de graduación que todos queremos ver. También tengo una grave preocupación. Entendemos que el plan de la próxima vez es tener 31 estudiantes en cada clase de Rigler de tercer grado. Esto es absolutamente incontenible. Todas las clases de Rigler se llenarán el próximo año. Estamos perdiendo todos nuestros EAs, y aún así, los padres están de acuerdo, es tercero grado, absolutamente debemos tener un profesor tercero. Sabemos de Rigler, con 31 niños en el classroom en nuestra escuela, no habrá educación en este año crucial. 31 niños, no funcionará. Vamos a tener un exodus masivo de familias, o vamos a tener que poner en marcha un profesor de bandera en octubre para rebalar, creando más caos estructural en Rigler. Estas clases serán locas. He sido madre en Rigler durante siete años. Siento que puedo hablar con autoridad sobre esto, ya que he estado allí más tiempo que cualquier maestro, y he estado allí más tiempo que casi cualquier personal. Uno más profesor de tercer grado, todavía tendremos tasa de clase a más de 20 por clase. Esta es una escuela de CSI. ¿Realmente queremos incorporar un solución de bandera en octubre cuando ya hemos soportado tanto cambio? Esto tendrá un efecto ripple en todo. El tercer grado es un año crucial. Absolutamente debemos conseguir que los niños leyan hasta el tercer grado. En este momento, estamos en el 20% de la línea de puntuación. Gracias por mostrar su preocupación por toda el clúster Madison. Una última cosa, nuestro maestro no pudo asistir, y nos gustaría que una persona sustituta hablara a su honor, si eso fuera posible.
Esto es un poco de protocolo de abreviatura, pero me gustaría hacer una solicitud de personal basada en eso, basado en su testimonio, porque como sabemos, Rigler ahora es una anomalía en términos de ser una escuela de DLI no lotería, y todos nuestros programas lotería tienen límites en el número de estudiantes, y así que esto es algo que me gustaría ver una explicación de personal de personal sobre por qué limitamos la tasa de clase en nuestras clases de DLI y todas nuestras otras escuelas de inmersión, y aún así, porque no es una lotería para Rigler, no estamos adhiriendo al mismo límite de tasa de clase, así que solo estoy haciendo esa solicitud de información. Superintendente, por favor. Gracias, y gracias por su micrófono.
Mi nombre es Natasha Lenhart, L-E-N-H-A-R-T, y mi problema es de un asunto personal. Algunos años atrás, muchos años atrás, desafortunadamente no pude graduarme de la escuela secundaria. Sin embargo, empecé a obtener un A, un BA, un máster y ser admitido al programa MSW en Portland State. Un par de años atrás, decidí que quería mi diploma de escuela secundaria. Ese fue el único punto en la pared que estaba vacío. Así que entré en busca de quien pensé que podía ayudarme a hacer eso, y de hecho vi muchos shows en la televisión sobre personas recibiendo su diploma de escuela secundaria después del hecho. Así que hablé con aproximadamente 20 personas durante un periodo de tres meses. Nadie dijo no, pero nadie me dio ninguna dirección o enfoque. Principalmente, me dieron otro número de teléfono. En Grand, incluso hablé con el director en ese momento y ofrecí hablar con los jóvenes de riesgo, hacer algún tipo de reunión de grupo y contar mi historia. De todos modos, no se tomaban. Así que finalmente, mi hermano, que es un profesor de escuela retirado el otro día, dijo, ¿por qué no te vas? ¿Por qué no vine aquí? Así que aquí estoy, y parece que nadie sabe la política. Ese fue el primer problema. Nadie podía decirme por qué Grand High School no podía darme mi diploma de escuela secundaria desde hace 50 años, aunque había cumplido todos los requisitos y de hecho tengo toda la documentación. Así que supongo que los dos problemas hoy son, me gustaría al menos saber qué es la política para las escuelas públicas de Portland en enviarme un diploma, por qué no puedo tener mi diploma, y si la política no incluye mi problema, ¿cómo puedo obtenerlo de todos modos para llenar ese hueco en la pared? Gracias.
¿Puedes dar tu información de contacto a la señora Huff, y nos seguirán con usted? Bueno, gracias. Vaya.
Hola, mi nombre es Stephen Weller, y soy el instructor de apoyo en el sitio de Rigler Elementary, y estoy aquí para hablar de nuestra necesidad de tasa de clase más pequeña. Sé que esto es una decisión difícil. No sé cuál es el nivel de necesidad en el distrito en otras escuelas que también podrían estar enfrentando situaciones similares, pero quiero abogar por Rigler. Este es mi segundo año de enseñanza allí, y estamos haciendo todo lo que podemos para ayudar a nuestros estudiantes a crecer en su independencia usando habilidades para lidiar con conflictos entre sí, para tomar control de su propio aprendizaje, para darles las habilidades de lectura y matemáticas y las habilidades de pensamiento que necesitan para continuar creciendo. Estamos haciendo lo máximo que podemos para alcanzar, llegar a ellos con un mensaje de positividad y esperanza. Esa es la mejor cosa que he visto en Rigler, es que amamos a nuestros estudiantes y que les decimos que creemos en ellos y que les mostramos que son personas valiosas. Estamos haciendo nuestro mejor en ese esfuerzo, y siempre estamos trabajando en mejorar. Tener 30 estudiantes, terceros, tener que estar dentro del edificio escolar por primera vez, tener que caminar hacia arriba por primera vez, en un pequeño, un classroom que es demasiado pequeño y que se calienta en el verano, en el comienzo del año escolar y en el final del año escolar, será un gran desafío. Si está en el presupuesto para darnos otro maestro para el tercer grado el próximo año, tendrá un efecto que ayudará a nuestros maestros y estudiantes un gran partido. Sé que es una decisión difícil, pero estoy aquí para pedir otro, otro maestro de tercer grado para Rigler para el próximo año.
Gracias de nuevo por sus comentarios, y por hacerse cargo de Roseanne Powell o la señora Huff esta noche si tienen algo en particular que quieren hacer con el board. Así que, reporte del superintendente. ¿Superintendente Guerrero?
Buenas noches, directores. Buenas noches. Buenas noches, directores. Como el año 2018-2019, el año escolar viene a terminar esta semana. El último día de clases para los estudiantes siendo mañana, seguido en unos días por nuestros maestros. Parecía un momento natural para, en el reporte de esta noche, resumir algunos highlights del año escolar y mostrar algunos logros y celebraciones del final del año. Creo que este año ha sido uno de muchos progresos en el distrito a través de muchos frontes diferentes, todos centrados en convertirse en una organización mejor, uno centrado en apoyar a nuestros líderes y educadores para positivamente impactar en nuestros resultados de estudiantes. Esto es trabajo transformativo. Es un proceso de mejora continua, y estoy apreciado por nuestros líderes escolares, educadores, personal de apoyo por su trabajo duro y dedicación. Así que mientras cerramos el año escolar, ya estamos preparados, ocupados, ya estamos ocupados mientras involucramos mucho plan este verano para una continuación exitosa de lanzamiento en el próximo año escolar. Así que solo para dar un quick look back, sé que parece un tiempo atrás, pero si recuerdan, el primer día de clases este pasado agosto, fui junto con el board y la dirección de PAT, y fui presente en nuestras dos nuevas escuelas secundarias, Harriet Tubman y Roseway Heights. Las puertas se abrieron a más de 1,000 estudiantes que ahora tienen acceso a una educación de secundaria comprensiva. Creo que esto es evidencia de nuestro compromiso para continuar rediseñando y mejorando nuestras ofertas de secundaria y expandir las ofertas para los estudiantes, particularmente en comunidades subservidas. También hicimos un esfuerzo tremendo en el enfoque continuo de la curricula core standard en todos los niveles de grado en Portland. Esto empieza a establecer un alcance y secuencia de instrucción que continuará apoyando a nuestros educadores con guía en la enseñanza y aprendizaje, y eso incluye un gran número de desarrollo profesional, que continuará para nuestros maestros y directores. En cuanto a los resultados, nuestras tasas de graduación continúan auge. Estamos obteniendo más seniores a través del escenario. Esto incluye continuar enfocando en la participación y ofreciendo a los estudiantes una rica variedad de programas CTE, trabajo avanzado que incluye una asociación con los colleges y universidades, múltiples caminos de graduación y una concertada intervención en el éxito de los estudiantes, equipos y atención. Remarcadamente, las tasas de graduación negra y afroamericana subieron un 6% este pasado verano. Remarkably, Black and African American graduation rates went up 6% this past spring. Our visioning, development of a vision, we spent months engaging thousands of students, families, school and district leaders, as well as community members, in a deep conversation about our, developing a shared vision for the future of our district and of our graduates. Together, we have begun to describe and develop a graduate portrait, what we want our future graduates to know and be able to do in their quest to become global leaders. We also identified and collaborated in identifying educator essentials and system shifts necessary to support our students. This has been an ambitious community engagement project. Thank you, Directors, for your active involvement and leadership. The outcome of this collaborative work is going to help to guide our decisions and actions for years to come. This year, we also commenced the development of our Master Arts Education Plan. We've taken stock, a full inventory of our arts discipline offerings across our schools, and we have ambitious goals to continue expanding visual and performing arts opportunities for students. We continue to make steady progress in the safety and modernization of our schools. Grant High School will be opening to students this August, and we'll start building Kellogg and reconstructing Madison, Lincoln, and Benson as our next projects. We are grateful for the generosity of our local taxpayers, for their deep commitment to providing excellent and inspiring teaching and learning environments for our students here in Portland. And there's a lot of work happening over the summer. New seismically strengthened roofs will be built at Sittin' and Wrigler Elementary Schools and Jackson Middle. Wrigler and Rose City Park will get new elevators. Work will begin seismically retrofitting Hayhurst. Jefferson High will receive fire alarm upgrades and new fire sprinkler system. Other schools are going to be getting fire alarms this summer, DaVinci, Community Transition, Jason Lee, Ainsworth, Maplewood, and West Sylvan. Asbestos remediation projects are going to be taking place at Lane, Woodstock, Vestal, Marysville, Beaumont, Wrigler, and Capitol Hill. Lead paint stabilization work is also in full swing this summer, with improvements taking place at 30 sites. And the work on the first group of 26 schools getting security upgrades will begin in July, with the second group of schools underway later this summer. Our third group of students will commence their work in the fall, finishing altogether in the spring 2020. Close to 3,000 students earned their high school diplomas in the past week, and we had some wonderful graduations last week. Just a quick photo tour, Benson, Cleveland, and Franklin. I'm glad you noticed. Grant, Jefferson, and Lincoln. Madison, Roosevelt, and Wilson, all in their school colors. Alliance at Meek, Metropolitan Learning Center, and Alliance at Benson. I want to thank our communications photographer, Beth Conyers, for some wonderful photography, our directors for participating in many of our ceremonies, and I want to thank Oregonian reporter, Eder Campuzano, credit for supplying us for the Alliance at Meek photo and his coverage of the ceremony. This shows a snapshot of Alliance student Lexi Morris getting her diploma from Principal Lorna Fast Buffalo Horse. You can catch Lexi's story of overcoming barriers and the work of our multiple pathways to graduation programs recently detailed in Oregon Live. Over the years, our culturally specific student groups have celebrated their academic and peer leaders and achievers in a variety of ways and ceremonies. This year, we tried something a little different and established a single night to honor our students of color, an all-star event that featured food, entertainment, and a host of inspirational words from our students themselves and community leaders. The evening, by all accounts, was a success, and I'm guessing we've started a new tradition here in PPS. I want to make sure to credit our Strategic Partnerships and Engagement Team for coming up with and putting on the event, especially Camille Edidabdom. Thank you. Congratulations to you and to all of our PPS All-Stars. Our students are not the only ones getting recognized these days. We're coming off a pretty eventful time here in Portland, celebrating its own traditions and events. Our own Benson Tech principal was knighted by the Royal Rosarians, and henceforth, we'll be referring to him as Sir Curtis Wilson. Lent K-8 was also awarded a first-place award in the Junior Rose Fest Parade, taking home the blue ribbon for best theme, Way to Go Leopards. And I want to make sure we recognize Pride Month. We'll have a strong contingent in the Portland Pride Parade this Saturday, June 15th, on the waterfront. Next year, hopefully when we're doing a look backwards, we'll be talking about our substantive progress in a few areas, to include climate justice, dyslexia, arts education offerings, middle school redesign, and other work strands that we're looking forward to embarking on in the coming school year. So sometimes the best way to sum up our accomplishments is to hear directly from some of our students and educators from across the district, so a short video clip for you.
We are the leaders our students are waiting for. You are the leaders they're waiting for. Let's have a great school year.
We are helping achieve this school, get ready for the other people that are gonna move into our classes.
We're here at Roseway Heights Middle School. It's the first day of school here in Portland, and we're really excited.
It is our first day, sixth graders only, and wow, a great day.
We're really, really excited about seeing the wonderful smiles on the first day of kindergarten. It's going to be a fantastic year for all of our schools and all of our kids.
We're on the school bus, and we're heading to Ainsworth.
I haven't done PE in over a long time.
It's been great. I've been sitting in Mandarin class for the last two hours.
Hi, I'm Camille. Nice to meet you.
I had a lot of questions about college, and she made sure to answer them, so that was good.
Thanks.
And we support our own school community. We support the Odyssey needs and the Ainsworth needs.
We add like a protein and fruit and vegetable and some fresh produce to each of them.
Once they see what it can do and what they can do on their own, they're going to do some like more formal lessons where they'll do very specific things.
We're choosing our background right now. It's, it's kind of like math. It's math课.
Like for all of our concepts, like, you know, for language arts, for math, for science, we start building those habits of minds for young students.
What we have behind me is a tiny house on a 24-foot trailer that our student has constructed.
The middle part right behind you would be the living area.
I've always been a physical learner, so having this class is a nice break and something that I see myself doing in the future.
And today, we have a group of students that are going to come see Grant, some for the first time, some that have seen it before, and find out what they think about it.
So you can see, we put in the second floor. We rebuilt the skylight, you know, painted the trusses, painted the ceiling.
It's an art building, and I think it looks really cool.
I'd like to break down the six state championship of 2019, the Lady Texters.
Well, today was a celebration for our Benson Lady Texters, just to recognize the incredible feat that they accomplished in winning the state championship.
So one thing that we've heard from our community is that they, they want to be part of the conversation, they want to be part of the process, and be part of dialoguing with our administration. So the World Cafe format really offered the community an opportunity to have meaningful conversations with members of our senior leadership team.
And I have to say, we are so thrilled for today and so glad that you're here to celebrate with us. This project is a long time in coming, and this can...
The exciting part of the morning. There's a lot of dirt over here. We got to move to the other side, and there's just a few shovels, so we're going to have to take some turns.
To everyone here today, we present you the graduated class of 2019.
Thank you to all our principals, our teachers, our support staff, everybody that keeps PPS running for your hard work and dedication. We know you're due a well-deserved summer to our students and families. We hope you have a safe and rejuvenating summer, and we'll, we'll look forward to seeing you back here in August. That concludes my report.
Thank you. It's been an eventful year. So reiterating, Superintendent Guerrero, thank you to everybody who has helped students this year graduate, get promoted, move into, you know, explore new things and learn new things. Looking forward to another eventful year next year. The next item is Franklin mascot name. The Board of Education received several complaints from community members regarding the name of Quakers being used as the nickname for Franklin High School mascot in school identification. The Board determined that the name Quakers, as used by Franklin High School violates Policy Number 2.20.01021B3, because Quakers is the name of a religious group. The complainants sought a change to the name of the Franklin High School nickname of Quakers, asserting that the name Quakers is the name of an organized religion and as such is inappropriate, offensive, and unconstitutional. In response to the complaint, the superintendent submitted to the Board a request for review of PPS's naming school district property policy. The Board of Education conducted a comprehensive review of the naming school district property policy and made numerous changes to the policy, including revised criteria for the naming of school district property, including schools, mascots, symbols, and other images considered for representation of a school or district. Following this change to district policy, the Board directed district staff to commence a public committee review process to determine a new mascot identification for Franklin High School. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to walk us through this?
Yeah, this is a long-awaited item, and speaking to this agenda topic, we have Franklin High School's very own principal, Chris Frazier, here this evening, and I also want to give kudos to Cameron Vaughn from our Communications and Public Engagement Office. I think this is her swan song here in helping facilitate a process, and I think we have the privilege of hearing from one of our student leaders as well, so I think they're going to come up and speak to the item. Thank you.
My name is Cameron Vaughn, and I am Manager of Community Engagement. My last name is V-A-U-G-H-A-N. In November of last year, I presented to you a plan for engaging Franklin High School community in helping to select a new name for the school mascot and identity. Under your guidance, we crafted a plan to pull together a well-rounded, multi-generational, and culturally diverse committee, whose purpose was to come up with a new identity to replace the century-old Quakers mascot. Knowing this name change is a sensitive issue for Franklin High School alums, Principal Frazier and I personally reached out to alumni members so that they could be part of this historic change. I'm so glad we did, for we were lucky to have alum and former business manager Steve Matthews back on campus, and I would not have met Bob Ernest and Alex Rodriguez otherwise. Their input was invaluable during our meetings. We advertised the committee membership in November and December and received numerous calls and emails from interested people. It was great to be able to connect and find out why they wanted to serve and what they hoped the outcome would be. In the end, we had a 19-person committee and thoughtful participation at every meeting. Having eight student members on the committee was vital, as they were insightful, fresh, and smart, and their logic, flora, often surpasses that of some of us older members. For me, it is a great reminder of the reason for the work we do, and they are going to be the ones who are impacted most by the name choice. We had current and past parents, staff, community members, students, and alums. We had six meetings between January and May. All of the meetings were open to the public, and the time and place were publicized on the PPS website. We had a dedicated email, phone number, and we put together a survey which was distributed throughout Franklin High School, feeder schools, PIL groups, affinity groups, parents, neighborhood association, and local businesses immediately around the school, as well as neighbors and alums. We delivered flyers to houses and businesses around the neighborhood and received nearly 1,700 responses to the survey, as well as approximately 100 write-in name suggestions. Following the survey, we reviewed the name suggestions one by one, and there were some colorful and creative contributions. Sasquatch, The Inventors, Flamingos, The Volt's, The Turkeys, The Benjamins, The Meerkats, and so on. But none of the suggested names sparked the sense of excitement of the original six names the committee came up with after speaking to peers, students, staff, and friends. After much review and a final vote, the committee ultimately chose Lightning as their number-one choice, and there was zero dissension among the membership. Lightning has historical connections, as Benjamin Franklin experimented with lightning and was the first to recognize its electrical properties. The last six months were a great experience, and I know our membership is happy with the outcome. Thank you for this opportunity to help the committee make Franklin history.
Good evening, Superintendent Guerrero and Board members. The Franklin High School Mascot Identification Committee was a collaborative and inclusive process, which followed the requirements set out by the committee charter. In working with our staff and partners, we essentially recommend, who were recommended through ASB Leadership Step-Up Son and via teacher recommendations, we were able to identify what students would be able to participate in this epic event for our school and our community. Students were also given the opportunity to self-nominate or to nominate a peer for their participation. The names that were gathered were reviewed to assure that within the, that our community was represented by each grade level, as well as reflected the diversity within our school, and also met the requirements of the committee charter. We worked with the understanding that a good representation of our students from different cultural communities was necessary to be in part of this process. I then held an introductory meeting with all the students to discuss the objective, the process, and the time commitment. With regards to how our meetings were conducted, the meetings were facilitated by myself and with the supportive district-provided personnel, Cameron Vaughn. The meetings were structured where all members, students, parents, teachers, staff, alumni, community members, and coaches all had an equal voice, regardless of their affiliation or role within the school. All the meeting times were posted on the Franklin High School Mascot Committee website, and were open to the public. Our first meeting in January, we reviewed the background. We talked about the committee charge, where we reviewed the charter, we talked about the board policy, as well as the admin directives which would support this process, as well as discuss the naming process. The action item that came out of that meeting was for each representative to meet with their constituent groups to come up with potential mascot names. In February, the idea was for us to report out on those mascot names and go through a narrowing-down exercise. Also in that meeting, we identified what are the priorities with regards to the name selection. We looked at things that resonated with Benjamin Franklin, or our school specifically. We looked at our southeast community or our neighborhood, and also something that was gender-neutral and non-offensive. The idea was also to create a survey using the top six names that were created, which Cameron just spoke to, and create a survey that would be presented to the entire community so that we could receive feedback. The survey was issued out through the principal newsletter, through school announcements, school messenger, clubs, student affinity groups. We canvassed the neighborhood physically. We shared with our feeder schools, as well as posted on the alumni website, and with the idea of implementing the survey and going live. Our March meeting consisted again of reviewing the data from the survey, as it was now live, and again, narrowed down the names that were suggested, also recognizing that as part of the survey, there was an option for individuals to add in, and so that's how we come up with Sasquatch and some of the other names that, again, were very creative. Through our March meeting, it was a very authentic conversations, as we sat around with lots of, and really embraced the diversity within the group, based upon age, based upon gender, based upon race, as we looked to align the priorities of our name with the priorities of our mission. We also looked at other ways that we could promote this event. So how can we get the information out to our larger community in the event that we happen to miss some? So we looked at publicizing at the PTSA auction. We looked at school events, i.e. choir concerts, athletic events. In April, we then came together and again, reviewed the data from the survey which Cameron provided, and also looked at how we would reach out to additional affinity groups, who again, was missing. I attended several student and parent affinity groups to ask for their recommendation and advice to assure that our potential names would be one that would be not only supported, but also not be seen as culturally insensitive. Again, reaching out to our family leadership team, Step Up Family Parents, the I Am Academy, our Black Student Union, our Latino Club, as well as our athletic teams. And finally, in April, we all came together, which was the big day for us as a school, where we were looking as a committee to vote and discuss the process for submitting the recommendation to Superintendent Guerrero and the PPS School Board. the recommendation to Superintendent Guerrero and the PPS School Board. This process was transparent. It was inclusive and collaborative. The media attended our last meeting, and it was comforting knowing that the proposed mascot names were vetted through a principal process, was done the right way, and had the support of everyone in the room with the names that were put forward. This process, as you can well imagine, could have been seen as divisive or problematic, as change is not easy. However, it was the strong support of the staff, the community, our students, and our Alumni Association members that assisted in this transition. We recognize that regardless of the name, it is how we support our students and treat one another in our community that matters most and how we will truly be remembered. And now I'd like to introduce student commentary from Flora Pollak.
Good evening. My name is Flora Pollak, and I had the honor of being asked by Principal Frazier to serve on the Franklin Mascot Identification Committee. Being a member of Franklin's ASB, I was excited to have another opportunity to represent my peers in a process that would be forever a part of Franklin High School's great history. At first, I felt nervous to meet with such a large and diverse group, many of whom were older than me. However, I soon realized that we all shared a common interest in Franklin High School and a mutual goal in choosing an appropriate new mascot. Each meeting was very exciting as we brainstormed various name suggestions. Some were based on Ben Franklin's history, while others found meaning in the alliteration. Within these meetings, respectful debate was had on different names. After surveying numerous stakeholders, our committee was able to wholeheartedly agree on a new mascot, the Franklin Lightning. Throughout this process, I was able to use social media, as well as my position as ASB Publicity Chair, to communicate updates with my peers. After our proposal was announced, it was exciting to see community members discuss the name change in multiple forums. Hearing and reading various comments, I felt proud of our final decision. Sitting here in front of you all tonight, I am cognizant of the historic decision I've been able to be a part of. Knowing that this mascot will live on much longer than my time at Franklin High School, representing my neighborhood in southeast Portland, it is a truly gratifying feeling. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Principal Frazier, Franklin students, and the broader community for the thoughtful and deliberate process. Thank you, Cameron. We reviewed your process, and we're forwarding the recommendation for the Board's approval this evening.
I just think it's a really striking name for a mascot, but I've just, I've gotten really charged up listening to you.
Okay, let's do the motion first, and then we can discuss. Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Director Brim Edwards moves. Director Espasa Brown seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5900. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. Okay, any board discussion?
So I think over the last year, I've got all the public comment. No lack of it. So I'm not going to call out that Principal Frazier is not even wearing the school colors tonight. So I just want to recognize, I don't have any questions for you, but I want to recognize just the sort of persistence of some people in the Franklin community that about five years ago thought it was time to make an important change at Franklin, and, but knowing also that it wouldn't be an easy change. And the last time that PPS had a mascot change was in the eighties at Cleveland High School. And so the, a group of parents and community members, primarily parents, filed a complaint with the district. It didn't go anywhere. They got, sort of got the runaround. Then they filed another complaint, and I want to acknowledge that when that complaint came before the Board a year and a half ago, we had, we received a recommendation from the superintendent to, that it was time to change, adjust our policy, because actually our policy still allowed for the current name. And that started a process by which I thought we had a great discussion about what names and symbols and images mean, and the impacts they have on people. So something that some people may hold dear can be deeply offensive and hurtful to others. And I think, I thought it was a really good discussion, and it gave us an opportunity in the committee process and then further at the board process to align our policy to our values. So thank you, Superintendent, for that recommendation, and to the Board members for your work. And I think a, sort of courageously changing things, even because change is hard. And we had a really valuable assist from the Office of the General Counsel. Thank you, Ms. Kane, for the work that you did in changing the policy. And I think where we landed gives us a policy that really will stand the test of time. And I think it then ultimately, it made the decision that we needed to have a change of the mascot much easier. It was really clear what we needed to do when we had the right framework. I had an opportunity to attend the kickoff meeting, and everything that was related here really captured the spirit of the conversation, even though you had people who were sort of ardent Quaker alums in the room and students in a really diverse group, that it was respectful and, I believe, really trying to honor, creating a new future. I don't want to underestimate that this is going to be a big change from the Franklin community. So having been a resident for fifty years in southeast Portland, there's a lot of people who grew up in the neighborhood, went to Franklin, and are very proud of their high school. And part of that, the tradition, is the connection to the current, soon-to-be a former mascot. And they're proud of Franklin, which is a huge asset to the community. They believe in Franklin Strong. They love their school, and they love their tradition. So it's not going to be easy, and I really have a lot of respect for Cameron, the Communications Office, and Principal Frazier, and all the participants on the panel, because it could have been a divisive process, and it was not. And I think the fact that we're here tonight with no dissent is a symbol of that. So I guess the one thing, and I have heard a lot from people in my neighborhood, lots of people who attended Franklin, that I guess the message would be to Franklin alum that tonight's action doesn't erase your history or invalidate it in any way, but tonight just begins a new chapter for the Franklin community and southeast Portland, and one, I think, that will be inclusive, reflects our values. And I think the biggest challenge is we're all going to have to learn how to correctly spill the word "lightning." But, so, again, I want to thank everybody involved, and also to the parents who sort of kicked this process off five years ago and persisted because, but for that, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Any other discussion?
So Principal Frazier, is it "Lightening" or "Lightning"?
Okay.
We'll greet that with thunderous applause.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, we could all do that, but we'll refrain. Okay, any other commentary? I think it's a, I think it's a testament to the, to the process and the fidelity with which you carried out the process, that, that this gives all the appearances of being a welcome change. And that, that was not a given eighteen months ago. So thank you for all the work. Okay, the Board will now vote on Resolution 5900. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Student representative?
I'm excited. I don't get to vote.
You don't get to vote yet, sorry.
But can I say something really fast?
Please.
I just wanted to say I'm really friend of, no, I'm really proud of my friend Flora because she's worked really hard on this, and like, just watching all of her hard work on this project, I know it's been hard to talk with all of our students, because we have a lot of them, but I'm just really proud of her and the whole committee. And I'm really excited that I get to represent the Lightning next year on the Board.
Thank you.
I want to just piggyback on Maxine's comment, which, when we were trying to create the process for this way back when, we had a lot of passionate adults, both who had sentimental attachments from the past and adults who are currently involved in Franklin. And we made a decision to go heavy on student representation in the process and on the committee. We had some discussion around that, and I'm glad we did, and I know you guys all were really the leaders of this process. So I hope you're excited for how it feels next year.
Okay, just to make it officially official, the resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, I'm now going to recess the Board from its regular meeting and convene as the Budget Committee. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to make any comments about amendments to the 2018-19 budget?
I know that our Deputy Superintendent and Budget Director likely want to.
Hello, Board. I am here on behalf of our CFO tonight, who is not able to join us. We have what I believe is a pretty straightforward budget amendment resolution. We're asking the Board to move appropriations within funds. No new appropriations, nothing from contingency, just moving from one program to another. In Fund 101, from Support Services to Instruction, and Fund 205, the same, both of those caused by...
Could you tell them what the fund names are? Thank you.
Well, Fund 101 is General Fund. Fund 205, I do not know, off the top of my head.
Special Revenue.
Well, we have two Special Revenue Funds represented, sorry. So in Fund 101 and Fund 205, which is General Fund and Special Revenue Fund, we are moving from Support Services to Instruction. This is just due to increased investment in Instruction. It has to do with how we code payroll positions. Primary cost drivers on both of these are payroll expenses. In Fund 299, which is where we account for our grants, we're asking to move fifty thousand from Support Services to facilities acquisition and construction. Between the approved and adopted budget process for 2018-19, this change happened, and nobody currently on staff knows why, but there was a fifty thousand dollar planned expense for facilities acquisition and construction. So we're going to ask the Board to basically revert that appropriation back to the approved budget level. And then in Fund 450, which is where we account for our, our bond construction projects, we're asking to move one hundred thousand from facilities acquisition and construction to Support Services to fund an increase in our insurance expenses.
If those are the only hanging chads that we have from that whole process, I think that's pretty good.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, the Board will now consider Resolution 5904, Amendment to the 2018-19 Budget for School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Director Bailey moves. Director Constance seconds the motion to adopt Resolution Number 5904. Ms. Huff, is there any public comment? Okay, any further board discussion? Or any discussion at all? Okay. The Board will now vote on Resolution 5904. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5904 is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now adjourn the Board as the Budget Committee and call the Board back into its regular session. Okay. The Board will now consider the remainder of its business agenda, having already voted on Resolutions 5900 and 5904. Are there any items you want to pull for separate discussion and a vote?
Yes, I'd like to pull out the Head Start resolution.
Okay. Ms. Huff, are there any changes to the business agenda? No? Okay. Okay, so we'll pull out the discussion of the Head Start. And Superintendent Guerrero, do we have anyone present who can...
We have some of our early ed team here, present this evening, to take any of your questions, directors.
So I had a couple of programmatic questions. Oh, sorry.
I'm Eileen Aisham, co-director of Head Start.
I am Robert Cantwell, co-director with Eileen.
So I had one sort of legal question, maybe it's a future legal... Do you have the answer?
I have.
So I'll ask my legal question first, and then a couple of content questions. So in the resolution, it has that we're, the federal requirements that we're the governing board, and just in terms of being in compliance with federal law, what are the requirements that the NEST is approving? Is that the question you were prepared to answer?
What I can do is probably, I have, under section, it's under 42 U.S. Code, it's the federal guidelines, as a governing body, which, which School Board is, you... Sorry. You, you have the legal and fiscal responsibility for Head Starts, and so what, there's a, there's a long list of responsibilities, mainly it's about oversight, maintenance, ensuring annual review, the things that you're being asked to look at today in terms of ensuring that there is the, approving financial management of the system, reviewing and improving policies for the Head Start program, reviewing the, the performance and ensuring that those data points are met with, you know, your annual goals.
The annual training requirement, too, for the Board.
Yeah, did that in February, I believe.
Great. Could you share, could that be...
I can share this document with you. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I can also share what kind of guides our work, which is the performance standards that were redone in 2007, I believe. And there's a whole section on program governance that I actually sent in today. And then there's also the Head Start Act, which gives a lot more detail, which I need to share with you as well. Section 642(c)(1)(e) of the Act, and it kind of outlines all the different items that we need to have our Policy Council look at, approve, make recommendations to, and then share with the Board, get Board resolution on.
Great. So tonight, we're reviewing your self-assessment and the goals for next year. The financial piece, is that done as part of our annual budget?
It's part of when we, so the budget, which will come with our grant for next year, so every year we have to renew our grant, it's a continuation grant. It's a five-year grant. We're going into year two of the continuation grant. So that will be, we will ask to have that reviewed this summer, and the budget will be attached to that.
Okay, great.
And what I can, what I can do is provide you a detailed memo of, of the governing bodies' responsibilities, so you have that for the...
That would be great, just because reading through the resolution is like, oh, do we have greater responsibilities here than sort of other programs, and it sounds like it's...
I'll do that for you.
I think one other thing to share is that most grantees are not in school districts. We're very unique in that way, and we are fifty-four years into this with Portland Public, which is pretty exciting. We're one of the originals. But other school Board, other Boards have, there's a configuration... But other school board, other boards, there's a configuration of what people need to be on that board. But in the Act, it says that if it's an elected school board, that we're exempt from that, because we do have layers of other supports. We have financial people, we have curriculum people, lawyers, all those kinds of things that are supposed to be on a Head Start board.
So I just had two questions about the plan. I want to thank Director Sparza Brown, who's been the Head Start, and Designee for schooling me or educating me on all things Head Start. So two questions I had, one was around attendance, and the attendance numbers for last, the goal was 85 percent, no. There was a goal related to attendance, and we had 67% of the students having attendance, 85% or greater. And I'm recalling from last year, the number was similar, and I know there's a strategy in here, but I'm wondering what the long-term trend is, because 67% is low. And then the following question is, should we, is there something we can do to increase the attendance? Director Sparza Brown had talked about having a full-day programs had been helpful, but I'm just curious, is there something we should be, we could be doing as a policy body, too?
So that, we have much better attendance in our full-day programs, because there are so many more parents working and going to school now with the economy the way it is. So part of the last resolution, we asked that we actually drop 25 slots to create more extended day. We don't have any more money to do it, but we will fill those slots. We found that the half-day sessions has quite poor attendance, and they're hard to keep full. So that's one thing. The way we look at attendance is much deeper now, and our overall attendance per month is supposed to be at 85, and if it's not, we need to research why and document that. But we have had really good attendance overall, but when you dive in, only 67% of the children had 85 or better. So there's a new performance standard that came out, and if a child is below 80% in their attendance, the family's advocates have to go to the family and work out a plan to help the family have better attendance. So that's kind of new, and this is a new way of really looking at it, like, so how many kids really are at 85%? And if they're not, what are you doing differently? Another thing we started, I think we're in year two, or maybe we're in year one, because we talked about it all last year, is we do a Help Me Grow tree, and it's very colorful, one of our parents created for us. But we download the data for that particular child on what their attendance is, and talk to the parents about that three times a year, in our Fall Conference, our Winter Conference, and our Spring Home Visit, and then really emphasize the importance of good pre-K attendance is a good indicator of third-grade reading and graduation from high school. So we are very aware of the importance.
So between adding, making more full-day slots, and having a plan, if they drop below 80%, do you expect that number to go up? Or are these...
We do. You know, our ultimate goal in five years was to be, have 80% of our kids at 85 or better. And we know we're at 67, so we just know we have to keep monitoring that and work hard with the families.
Great. And then the other question I had, related to the ensuring every, all children and families are receiving support to be healthy and ready to learn, there was data relating to dental and vision, and like, the number of screening, the referrals, and then treatment, and as you move across the spectrum, there seems to be a fair amount of drop-off of those that actually then get treatment, and so I was...
And we know that that's a challenge.
Is there something you need from the board or the district to reverse those numbers?
Well, we...
Or not reverse them, but I guess improve them, so that students are getting what...
Right, because we do a great job of screening for dental and vision, you know, we work with the KCI Institute. I mean, we've got a lot of great screening tools. It's the follow-up that we really are trying to focus on. And we look at actually list of kids, like, who are these children, what classrooms are they in, where do they attend, and who can support us? So do we go to our family service worker? Do we have the nurse reach out to those individual families? So that's all part of the strategy of trying to figure out, okay, so you've got these numbers, what are you going to do about it? What strategies do you have? What supports do we have? We have contracts with dentists if they need dental work and they don't have insurance, but a lot of our families, as you can see, 94% of our families do have insurance now, we help them access that and get the support they need.
So it's not just, it's not just this program that has a problem with follow-up to screenings. This is a statewide problem. And I think it speaks to the need for better integration of healthcare, which is unfortunately beyond our purview. But I think it's, I think it's something that we should all be individually, if not collectively, advocating for on a state basis. And I did have one question about the 94%, I think, insurance rate?
With health insurance.
I'm curious, it's high, but...
It could be a hundred.
Given Medicaid expansion, it probably could be higher.
Yeah, and I think that's something we have to help families navigate sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of, a lot of issues some families are dealing with, and sometimes that's not the focus. But we're lucky to have family service workers that help families navigate systems.
So there might be some external resources to PPS that we can, that we could tap into to help with that?
That would be wonderful.
And also on the follow-up.
Okay.
Just on the follow-up.
So the Head Start program is responsible for the screening?
Yes.
And then they're getting treatments, I'm just looking at the vision, 16% refer to the 16, 60% completed treatment, so it implies that 40% of the students who needed some sort of vision correction or...
Correct.
Assistance, didn't get it. Is this Head Start their sure responsibility, just to, I guess, like the rest of PPS, just to do a referral? Or is it that we have some sort of more formal arrangements for, like, we give them a referral, or they get the results of the screening, it's really up to families, or...
Well, it's up to families to get to the appointment, and maybe that's where we can help. But the KCI Institute, OHSU, I mean, there's a lot of resources out there, it's just getting the family to the resource. We found out this year that, was it the Casey Institute? I don't know. But they would even provide transportation. So we just need to really understand that information and know how to access it for families.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to say, as somebody who couldn't see the top one or the eye chart, that, I mean, that can have profound impacts on the students' abilities to learn, or just to socialize, or everything else. So if we can unlock that, it seems like that would be really living up to our giving all students, you know, really being ready to learn. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other... Okay, let's do the motion first. Do I have a motion to adopt, a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So move. Second.
Director Constable moves. Director Sparza Brown seconds the motion to adopt the business agenda. Is there any other board discussion on the business agenda? Okay. We will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The business agenda passes by a vote of seven to zero. So I will adjourn in a moment, but we are going to adjourn this regular meeting and then move upstairs to the Mazama Room for a work session. Next Tuesday, June 18th, we'll have another work session, and the next regular meeting of the board will be held on June 25th. Okay? Meeting is adjourned.